Good evening, thank you.
Emily Littlejohn.
Thanks, Michelle, all set.
Ed Kellum.
I'm here, thank you, Michelle.
James McDonald.
I'm here, thanks, Michelle.
Jason Gank.
Everything is awesome, thank you.
Wonderful, Jenny Grofton.
Thanks, Michelle, I'm here.
Jody Andrews.
All good, Michelle, thanks.
Jill Mrazinsky.
I'm here, thank you.
Julie Taylor.
Loud and clear, thank you.
Thank you, Kayla Delgado.
I'm here, thank you.
Kim Barron, one more time.
I'm here, thank you.
Thanks, Kim McDaniel.
I'm here, thank you, Michelle.
Cody Erb. Cody, I saw you unmute, but I didn't hear you.
Technical difficulties, I'm here, thank you, Michelle.
Alright, Kristen Decker.
I'm here, thanks.
Larry Dorr.
I'm here, thank you.
Larry Garlick. I think I heard you, can you confirm Larry Garlick, please?
I am here.
You kind of cut out there for just a second, Larry, can we try that one more time?
I am here.
Lovely, okay, there you go, loud and clear, thank you very much, Mark White. Mark White. Alright, we'll come back around, Matt Munch.
I'm here, thank you.
Matthew Boco.
I'm here, Michelle, thank you.
Max Kirschbaum.
All good, thanks.
Norm Halbert.
I'm here, thanks.
Phil Shires.
I'm here, thank you.
Rita McConnell.
I'm here, thank you.
Ron Arguello.
Present, thank you.
Ryan Hagerness.
All set, thank you.
Scott Takahashi.
I'm here, thank you.
Sean McCartney.
I'm here, thanks.
Tammy Hitchens.
I'm here, thank you, Michelle.
Taylee Clark, I believe, joining by phone. Taylee, I'm sure that you're logged on, but that you haven't entered a PIN, so I'm going to go ahead and send that back to you now. Teresa Boco.
I'm here, Michelle, thank you.
Chief Carlson.
I'm here, thanks.
And Todd Rea.
Welcome to the webinar, you have entered as an attendee in listen-only mode.
Mr. Mayor.
They're all going to introduce themselves with their names on the video before you do the proclamation.
Thank you.
It's just the worst to have someone mispronounce your name when you're getting introduced, so I wanted to do it right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
It's just to have someone mispronounce your name when you're getting introduced, so I wanted to do it right, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Michelle, this is Dave Gurman, I believe, you can do Mark White now for a sound check.
Okay, perfect, Mr. White, if you want to just pipe up real quick and let us know if you can hear us, and make sure that we can hear you.
It appears that we're live even though we haven't had a notice that the streaming has started.
It's just starting, I just got it up, I mean, just when you said that.
Okay, and Dee, can you bring up the Pledge of Allegiance flag slide? Okay, are we streaming or are you recording?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll go and get started. Good evening, everyone, this is the December 14th, 2020 Westminster City Council meeting, currently 7:02 PM, and I would ask you please, if you would, to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be the roll call, Ms. Parker, are you a Miss Fitch?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Councillor Demont.
Here.
Your Pro Tem sites. Councillor Seymour.
Here.
Councillor Scully.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
And Councillor Bowles.
Here.
And thank you, Councillor, welcome. The seat, and you have it for you, the minutes of the preceding meeting of November the 23rd, at this time I would entertain a motion, Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the November 23rd, 2020 meeting, with a correction to Item 11A, Councillor's Bill Number 33, to read that the bill passed on second reading, five to two, with Councillors Demont and Smith voting no.
Okay, Councillor Demont.
Second.
Have a motion, and second, all those in favor, please signify by aye.
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 Any opposed, hearing known the motion is carried. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a couple of presentations to make tonight, and in behalf of that, we are also going to attempt to have a video with us for that item, so in between these two, we're going to try to have a video played. But let me get the first one up, this is in recognition of the Westminster Youth Advisory Panel seniors who graduated earlier this year. So whereas the City Council of the City of Westminster believes that our youth should share with their community leaders the responsibility in addressing their needs, desires, challenges, and issues in molding their own futures, and whereas the city values its youth and desires to advance and promote their special needs and interests, therefore, created by the Westminster Youth Panel on September 13th, 1999. Whereas the Youth Advisory Panel had 19 members appointed to the 2019-2020 Year School Year, whereas the Westminster Youth Advisory Members listed below graduated from high school and departed from the 2019-2020 Youth Advisory Panel. And whereas it's important to acknowledge the contributions made by existing panel members, now therefore I hereby ask the Mayor of the City of Westminster, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, to hereby honor the 2019-2020 Youth Advisory Panel graduating seniors. Jasleen Batra, DSS Byers High School, Jennifer Buck, Hidden Lake High School, Maya Davis, Legacy High School, Kane Hensley, Hidden Lake High School, Mackenzie Jones, Mountain Range High School, Adeline Ruas, Homeschooled, Claudia Simchuk, Stanley Lake High School, Pauline Simchuk, Stanley Lake School, and Abby Waller, Legacy High School. We appreciate greatly, many of these members have served all four, and some in case, five years on the panel prior to graduating high school. They have done yeoman service of representing the city to the youth, many of them have participated in both national and international exchanges of peer groups, and they have done an excellent job in representing the city. We greatly appreciate their time and their effort, I wish them the best that they move on to colleges and other careers. At this time, I'd like the clerk to go ahead and play a short video from the new group that's coming in. Jody, it's up to you.
Moment, please, I'm trying to work on this, give me one moment, please.
Okay, go ahead.
You're going to have to give me a minute, it's not working, I'm sorry. It's not working for me, I'm going to have to give you, give me a minute, please, I apologize.
Okay, just take your time.
Mr. Mayor, this is Michelle Parker, if you'd like, we can circle back to this item a little later in the meeting, if you'd like to move on to the next proclamation and give Jody a moment to work on this.
We're going to need her to do the, well, that video is part of that proclamation.
Ah, I understand.
Do you want to move to public comment, but you're going to need Jody to work on that.
I think we'll give Jody a moment then. Let me see the public comment, let me see if I can get that public comment going, if that's okay, let's see if that one's going to work. Nothing's working. For some reason, it's not letting me unmute what I have, so bear with me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Jody, real quickly, this is Michelle, I noticed that the audio PC has been moved over into Staff Panelists mode, I'm not sure if that should also be side-by-side with Stream PC. According to Matt, I have to be a presenter in order to show the video. Okay. So, and on the presentation, to be able to do the voicemail, I have to be a panelist, so bear with me one moment, please, thank you.
...as a city board and as individuals to eliminate evils such as racism in our community. We commit ourselves to the residents, guests, and businesses of the City of Westminster to ensure that our community... Justin Daniel Davis, resident, City of Westminster. I submit this message for public comment for the council meeting dated December 14th, 2020. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem, and esteemed members of the Westminster City Council, my name is Justin Davis, I am honored to serve as the current Chair of the Inclusivity Board of the City of Westminster. Please accept the following statement in relation to an incident in our community that has recently been brought to our attention. I submit this statement during public comment on behalf of the Inclusivity Board, the formal statement is as follows. As the Inclusivity Board of the City of Westminster, we stand in solidarity against all forms of hatred and oppression. One of our neighborhoods was recently targeted by an anonymous distribution of propaganda that promoted white supremacy.
Are you all hearing?
Yes, we're hearing.
Okay, sorry.
We believe that all residents, guests, and businesses of Westminster are entitled to live free of intimidation, threats, and fear. As such, we stand united with our friends, family, and neighbors targeted or harmed by this hateful incident. As the Inclusivity Board of the City of Westminster, we condemn white supremacy and such attempts to divide our community. We pledge to undertake any action within our power as a city board and as individuals to eliminate evils such as racism in our community. We commit ourselves to the residents, guests, and businesses of the City of Westminster to ensure that our community is a beacon of light where diversity is celebrated, and where all are treated with equality and dignity. This is the end of our collective statement. As you are aware, since our formation as a board of the City of Westminster in 2016, and as part of our charge by the Westminster City Council, the current mission of the Inclusivity Board is to envision a diverse community where everyone understands the city belongs to them, and that their participation matters. The mission of the board is to work with City Council to advocate for all voices within our community. We invite anyone to visit us on our website at www.cityofwestminster.us/inclusivity for more information about the Inclusivity Board and our work. Finally, we appreciate the great work of Inclusivity Board members, our city staff liaisons, our current City Council Liaison, David Demont, and of course, we appreciate all of you, our Westminster City Council, for your continued support and commitment to our efforts, thank you.
Michelle, is that the only video or audio tape you had for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is the only one. Just want to check in really quickly with Jody, to get a status on the video and see if we should move forward or continue to, to hold and wait for a transition to that video. I think I have it.
Alright, if you have the video, go ahead and try to play it.
Okay, one second, please. It just disappeared on me.
Good evening, Westminster City Council, my name is Kelly Jacobson, and I'm with the Westminster Police Department. I'm the School Resource Officer at the Academy of Charter Schools, and I've been a staff liaison on the Youth Advisory Panel for the last two years, Kayla. Hi, my name is Kayla Delgado, I am the Irving Street Library... Staff liaison on the Youth Advisory Panel for the last two years, Kayla. Hi, my name is Kayla Delgado, I am the Irving Street Library Coordinator for the Westminster Public Libraries, and I am also a staff liaison for the Westminster Youth Advisory Panel. We would love to introduce you to our 2020 and 2021 Youth Advisory Panel members.
Hi, I'm Rachel Shagnon, I'm a senior at North Flum High School, and this is my third year on the panel, and this year I'm serving as chair, Jack.
I'm Jack, my real name's John, I go to Monarch High School, I'm a senior this year, I am the Vice Chair, and I've been on the APP panel for five years, I'd like to introduce Blake.
Just went away, I'm sorry.
Alright, let's try to come back to this item when we can get there, we'll hold until we have a later time. Ms. Parker, did you have anyone else signed up for public comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we did have a resident who had requested the link to give live testimony, that individual has not at this time joined our meeting, and it is possible that he might join later, if he does, I will absolutely let you know.
Okay, is there anything else that you need to play as far as any pre-recorded items?
No, sir, this evening we had one voicemail public comment, as well as all of the email-written public comments that were attached to your packet, a couple that were received today before the deadline were forwarded to you individually, and also attached to the packet and posted online as well, so at this time, we have no further public comments to play or anyone to invite in to speak to you at live.
Alright, so I have one other option on the quick video, Ms. Delgado, if you can make her a ability to share the screen, she has the video up and it works on her computer. Can you make her a presenter? Jody.
Hold on, I'm trying to work with Doris, hold on, please, yes, sir.
Can you, can you get Kayla Delgado up so she can present on her screen to the, to the panel, she's got the video up, working on her computer.
Okay, hold on, please, is she on, is she in the queue?
She's in the queue, she's one of the...
Okay, let me find her. Attendees. Kayla, oh, what is it? I put her in as a presenter.
Alright, alright, Ms. Delgado, you want to try, if you can share yours, there we go.
Yes, let's do it. Can you see this?
She can see it.
Perfect, let's go.
We need audio, though.
All the tech folks went to... Sharing the screen, and should be sharing audio as well.
Seems like if you, you can get the video or you can get the audio, I had it before, Doris Wigglesworth is now helping me, so she's much better at this probably than me, so bear with us, we're working on it, thank you so much.
So, last week when I did a Zoom presentation, you had to click Enhance Audio at the bottom of the, the video, so if you click on the video, there should be a place in the left-hand side that says Enhance Video, Enhance Audio.
Let's see, anything like that.
Or Optimize, yes, it says Optimize, Enhance, Optimize.
Audio. Unfortunately, I don't see that as an option, sorry, I thought I could solve it.
Alright, guys, we're going to have to move on, we, we'll have to delay this till next week, and then we'll do it, then, we have a long agenda tonight. Let's move on to the next item, Item 6, Report of City Officials, Mr. Tripp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, just a couple of things, first of all, thank you for your patience with the audiovisual challenges this evening, we've been doing this for eight or nine months, and we've dodged most of these issues along the way, and I appreciate the work IT staff has done, this is very frustrating for them, and I can assure you that we're, we're doing the best we can under these circumstances. I would just like to thank all of you for taking three Mondays in December to be with us, Council, we have a meeting on the 21st, which I want to make sure people are aware of, it's the last meeting of the year, we have three meetings only in December, and November, and actually January, so we have a very busy agenda during these times. I want to also recognize the Youth Advisory Panel and the work that they do, and the Mayor and the city staff for the representation of the council, and staff members that participate in this, these are terrific leaders in our community, they just happen to be a little bit younger than us, but they, they're doing wonderful things, and we've seen them go on to some very extraordinary careers, just in my time in the city, so thank you for your support, and happy holidays, I'll have one more chance to say that coming next Monday, thank you.
Alright, let's turn to the council, council, if you have any comment. Councillor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank the boards and commissions for all the work they do, we would have, I'm not sure that this city would be where it is if it weren't for our boards and commissions, and this last weekend, we had the great privilege of interviewing new applicants for the boards and commissions, and appointing some new people to our boards, so very cool to be a part of that, and just really wanted to thank everyone who partakes in being a part of that. I wanted to also acknowledge and thank the Inclusivity Board for their beautiful statement on our vision as a city about diversity, this is a very important issue, and I think they did a great job, and I commend Councillor Demont for leading that team and being a part of it, so thank you, I very much appreciate that, and to the Youth Advisory Board, you are our future, and we are just so darn proud to have you as part of our leadership, so thank you. And finally, a big shout out to our city manager, Don Tripp, who has done some super things as a city manager this week in really showing his staff that he cares about them and that he values them, and he dressed up as Santa, and he went and visited all of his staff, and I just think that's tremendous, these are hard times, and I know that many of us are working at home, and many of us are isolated, most of us are isolated, and it can be very lonely, and it can be tasking on our mental health, and our city manager recognizes that, and he took it into his own hands, and he went out and showed his staff how absolutely wonderful all of them are, and how valued they are to our city, so thank you, Mr. Tripp.
Councillor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to give a quick thank you to the Inclusivity Board for their statement and their work on that, while we were working on selecting new board members for the various holes in our boards and commissions, the Inclusivity Board was spending their Saturday in a special meeting, coming up with a statement due to an issue like they stated, in the city where somebody was basically doing a hateful act, and so, one of the members of that board stepped up and said, hey, we should really put out a statement about this. one of the members of that board stepped up and said, hey, we should really put out a statement about this. So, you know, they deserve all the credit for all that they do as far as pushing inclusivity and calling out hate in our city where we see it. And, and more than that, honestly, I've got to know some of those folks, and they really want to have a good conversation and try to get people to come together by understanding their differences and realizing, you know, hate's not the way that, that the city wants to go. So all the credit is due to them. I also wanted to point out with this letter, this entire council has signed on to that letter with Inclusivity Board to stand in solidarity with them. So I thank the council for doing that. I think that, you know, we've tasked these folks with an important task, and for us to stand with them makes a lot of sense. So I think that that's really great that, that we've all done that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is, please, you know, don't forget your small businesses while you're doing your Christmas shopping. I know there's a lot of good shops down in South Westminster that you can go buy arts. My wife and I went and bought a lot of our gifts down at some of the galleries down there, as well as your restaurants, if you can eat to go. I know you hear that probably a lot from us. You know, but those businesses are struggling, as we all are through this year. And, you know, if we want businesses around or restaurants around to go eat at, we need to help them out so that we see them survive through this pandemic situation. And the last thing I would mention on that is, a lot of those folks are able to keep their servers on, trying to help them make an income. So don't be afraid to be generous when you tip, because those folks aren't able to do the where they usually make their money. Service industry like I have, you know that that's where they make their, their bread and butter. So with that, I hope you have a safe, happy, happy holiday if you don't decide to join us next week for our last meeting. And that is my comments.
Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to thank the Inclusivity Board for acting on the recent hate and the hate message that has been passed around neighborhoods and community, parts of our community. They acted quickly. They met on a Saturday, and I appreciate that. And this type of bigotry and hatred cannot be allowed to, to stand in our community. So they acted quickly, and all of the council, I know, acted quickly when we were invited. I want to thank Counselor Demont for reaching out to all of us on council and including us in the process, because we all signed on, and I'm very glad we were able to do that, and show a strong signal that everyone should be, like the letter said, everyone should be treated with equality and dignity. So I just wanted to say that, thank them, and thank everyone involved in that process, allowing me to sign on and be a part of supporting that, that message. And then, as an update, the Planning Commission met last Tuesday to receive a presentation on our Sustainability Plan draft from Paul Schmick and our Sustainability Officer. They had a lot of good questions, and he was able to answer those questions, and I think they're going to follow up on other questions. So they did have some good, good input, and they're making the rounds with the Sustainability Plan, and it was in the Planning Commission last Tuesday. So that's what I have. So thank you all, and have a good evening.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for your comments, obviously. Mine are going, I'm going to share some of your sentiments. Like many residents in Westminster, I was incredibly disheartened to learn about the acts of hate and intimidation in our community. And make no mistake, distributing flyers of white supremacy is intimidation. I have to say, it was nice to have the counter to that so immediate and so beautifully written, crafted by our Inclusivity Board. A board that's made up of community members that are willing to dedicate their time, their talents, and their energy to make a more inclusive community, to make a community where everybody feels safe, welcome, heard, and valued. And so I just want to say thank you to that board. I want to say thank you to Mr. Davis for his voicemail. I'm very appreciative of their efforts. I, we've heard a lot from many of you concerned about our oil and gas land use regulations. A lot of people have voiced that they want to see larger setbacks. I want you to know that we're listening to you, and that this is an issue that we take very seriously, always promoting and protecting public health and safety. And so I, in particular, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I, I do know that that's an issue that's very important to me, and we're going to want to make sure we hit the right, the right threshold. It's felt like forever since last March and April, when we started experiencing all of the COVID craziness. But we do have a light at the end of the tunnel. I do know that, I believe, today was the first day that members were receiving, members of the healthcare community were receiving the vaccine. And I am so appreciative of those efforts and thankful for them. And so I just want to say there is hope, there is light. And I agree with Counselor Demont. In the meantime, let's do every single thing we can to support our local businesses, to help them survive this storm. So if you're still looking for holiday shopping, gift cards for local restaurants, I would recommend our local shops. Again, I agree with anyone who's gone shopping at our locally-owned galleries or any type of, of locally-owned businesses. Keep your dollars in your community where you can. You know, we really do rely on sales tax to be able to provide the city services like police and paving and, and all of the things that you get from the city. So please, please do shop local. It matters. And then I also want to echo the, the appreciation and just the inspiration in interviewing board and commission applicants this weekend. We have a great community, a lot of people who want to step up and serve. And I always leave those interviews feeling really proud to live in Westminster and really odd by the like, the types of folks who live here and who want to give back. And I would encourage anyone listening, there's lots of ways to volunteer in the community, and next time we have a boarding commission roundup, please consider applying. Hope everyone has a great holiday season and look forward to seeing you next Monday.
Other comments from council? I know we're going to move the proclamation for the second reading of the Youth Advisory Panel in the video till next week, and we've had some difficulties with our audio stuff tonight. We do have Mr. Shea who was trying to connect earlier on. If there are no other council comments at this time, Ms. Parker, would you allow Mr. Shea to come in?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Mayor. At this time, Mr. Shea, I'm going to unmute your microphone, and you will have five minutes to make your public comment. Please go ahead, sir. I am showing that you are self-muted. Mr. Shea, if you could unmute yourself, we're not getting any audio. Thank you. Bear with us for just one second. City Council, if you would, we've just sent Mr. Shea a message to request to unmute. Mr. Mayor, I'm not getting any response from Mr. Shea. If you'd like to move on, we can attempt to contact him offline and circle back to him for his public comment.
All right, that'll be fine. We'll try to keep moving. Let's go on to Item Eight. This is a consent agenda. It's a routine set of matters to be acted on by a single motion. We pulled the council earlier. There has been a request for Item Eight A to be removed from the consent agenda. All other items remain on the agenda. If I could have someone who's ready to make the motion for the consent agenda. Mr. Seymour, if you want to take the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that City Council adopt the Consent Agenda Items Eight B through Eight D.
Counselor Demont? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by aye. I'm sorry. That's me. That's a roll call, Ms. Parker.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council. Going back to Item Eight A, we've had a request to pull this one for a public hearing. I need a motion to bring this one to the floor for discussion, please. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council adopt Eight A.
Okay, Mr. Counselor Seymour?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. At this point, I will open it up to the floor for discussion. Mr. Demont, you're the one that requested to have it removed. Start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious why with, you know, kind of budget constraints and stuff. So called an occupational hazard, but being an IT leader, I know it's pretty common on to have a replacement cycle. So I understand, you know, what you've put in front of us. However, I also know that in, in rough times, things are delayed by a year or two, and you break fixes as needed. So I'm having a hard time understanding why we're, we're going to do that this year, considering our budget constraints.
Thank you, Counselor Demont. You know, this gives me a chance to maybe address a whole number of items that are on the agenda tonight. We had internally a good deal of discussion about which of the purchases for 2021 we would proceed with by the end of the year, which would be deferred. We've worked on this, reviewed it, and triple-reviewed it. In fact, I had a conversation just last week again with the IT Director about their plans for actually initiating the purchases. And I can make certain to you that what we're moving ahead with immediately are all things that are necessary for the integrity of the system and equipment that needs to be replaced. I'm going to invite Phil Shire on here to do a much more technical rendition of what I'm saying here, but I want to reassure all of you in the public that we're very cognizant of the uncertainty of 2021 revenues that right now we're predicting, certainly are in jeopardy should there be more shutdowns and those sorts of things happen. And the purchases that we're making, all of them on the agenda tonight, were highly scrutinized, and it's necessary for those to move forward, for us to continue to not have a, a problem with continuity of service. But Phil, if you wouldn't mind, come in and maybe add any specifics to what I've provided to the council in a general way. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tripp. This is Phil Shire's IT Systems Manager. Counselor Demont, yes, the total value in there also includes items like the sand that has reached the end of its useful life that we do have to replace that we discussed earlier this year. The actual number for the PC replacements that we are going to be able to replace this year is only 280,000 of the requested 1.7. And those, we are going to be shifting off into later in the year, until the funds become more available. But this incorporates all of our software as a service. Think of like our email service that has to be paid as a service to us to keep email flowing, our support and maintenance contracts on all of our applications. So this is more encompassing than just a PC replacement.
That makes a lot more sense. I'm just trying to match that up. So and I was all having that discussion about that sand, and if I remember correctly, you guys said that the current one was no longer going to be to a place where you're going to be able to upgrade it. But correct me if I'm wrong, we're also somehow utilizing that sand somewhere else, even though we can't.
Yes, so what we do is, in the current production environment in City Hall, there are trays that have already reached their eight years, and those we do have to retire. They can no longer be covered under a support contract. The remaining equipment, including the controllers, will move down to our, our backup location and will be extended for another four years under a non-mission critical support contract. So where the equipment can be extended and supported by the manufacturer, we will keep, continue to use. This is just to replace equipment that is no longer supported by our, by the manufacturer.
Okay. And can you tell me, like, with the IT budget like this, why there's such a large contingency?
Contingency comes in from, we've had a lot of services. So a good example is Microsoft, and with the COVID, also with GoToMeeting, we are not 100% sure what 2021 is going to bring. So this just allows us to spend with our current vendors to be able to enhance current services. So if we need to, a good example is if we have to purchase more licensing to allow call-in bridges for our meeting platform, this will give us the ability to purchase those without having to go back to council.
Okay. And I guess the only question I'd have on that is, is still like this last year, we don't think we're at a place where we would have that already covered, since we've kind of been remote since March, or is that, what does that account for? We've kind of been in that situation since, since March.
Yeah, it's a good, a good question. And a good example in the case of the conference rooms is, as we hopefully in 21 are able to move back into City Hall, there will be technologies that allow us to use conference rooms in a virtual environment, or to be able to allow some staff to be able to work in the building and outside. At this time, we just don't have the, the staff in the building to purchase those where it would make sense. So that's just one example.
No, no, that actually makes a lot of sense with you explaining it that way. So with that, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So I appreciate you going through all those facets of this with me.
My pleasure.
Your Protem Sights, you had your name in the queue?
I was just in a rush to second.
Are there any other questions or comments from council on Item Eight A? Roll call vote, Ms. Parker. Item Eight A, please.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Thank you, Council. Motion carries on a seven-o vote. Moving on to the next item, there are no appointments and resignations tonight. We'll move into Item Ten A. This is a public hearing and first reading of Counselors Bill Number Thirty-Eight to the Westminster Minister Code, Sign Code in particular. At this time, I will turn to staff to see what recommendations they have, and then we do have one person, I believe, is requested to speak. So, Mr. Tripp, who would you like to turn this to?
Well, this is, this is in our Community Development Department, Dave Downing. He's had staff, including Dave Gurman, who have worked on this. And so I'll just turn to Dave to ask him if he has, if the staff has any additional information they want to add besides what you've received in the, in the report. I will say that I do know we have somebody who's calling in. I think you've just mentioned that. And we would defer to allow that speaker to kick this off if that would be your pleasure.
Right.
This, this Dave Downing staff does have a short presentation available if, if council would like to hear it. Other than that, though, if you want to proceed with the public hearing, that's fine.
Let's go ahead and get your presentation done, Mr.?
Very, very good, Mayor. Staff is, staff is pleased to be able to come to council tonight with our recommendations to pass the Counselors Bill regarding revisions to the, to the Sign Code. For the past three years, staff has been working very diligently and, and especially engaging in a inclusive and far-reaching public outreach and input gathering process to, to gain input from a great variety of stakeholders, certainly including Certainly, including the end users of of signs within the city. Represented not necessarily totally, but in great part by the Westminster Chamber of Commerce. I'm particularly proud, as you as you mentioned, of our planning staff who has been working on this. Led by Senior Planner, assisted ably by Sean McCartney and of course, Planning Manager Rita McConnell. At this time, I'd like for for Mr. Gurman to make his remarks.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Downing. Just really quick, can everyone hear me okay? Thumbs up?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and esteemed counselors. My name is David Gurman. I'm a senior planner with the city's planner Planning Division. It is my pleasure to be presenting to you all this evening. Also with this eve, also with us this evening are Dave Downing, as you just heard from Community Development Director Rita McConnell, our Planning Manager, Sean McCartney, our Senior Urban Designer. John McConnell, our Principal Planner, Mark White, our Sign Code Consultant of White and Smith LLC. In addition to City Attorney DeFranco, we also have Matthew Munch from City Attorney's Office with us tonight. Mr. Munch has been the principal attorney working on the sign code with us. Next slide, please. In December of 2017, the Planning Division began laying the foundation for updating the city's sign code, which is Title 11, Chapter 11 of the Westminster Municipal Code. The decision to update the sign code was initially triggered by the Supreme Court decision Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, which was rendered in June of 2015. Staff recognized the changes to the existing code were needed to bring it into compliance with the Reed versus Gilbert decision. Additionally, the existing sign code had not been substantially updated since 2007 with only two minor amendments in 2011. It was time to create a new code that was easier to understand, that better addressed new trends and technologies, and that cleaned up and removed problems that had been identified with the existing code. This was recognized by the City Council as well, as an update of the sign code was added as an action item on the strategic plan adopted in July of 2016. Tonight, we highlight the work that has been completed and present to you the current and possibly final draft of the new sign code. Next slide, please. Several goals were laid out for the new code. Staff wanted to make a document that featured photos, illustrations, and charts to make the regulations easier to understand. The new code had to be compliant with the tenants of the Reed v. Gilbert decision. Creation of the new code had to be grounded by a transparent process that included an inclusive public outreach component. Finally, staff wanted a code that would meet the evolving needs of sign users within the community while not compromising the established character and aesthetic quality of the city. Next slide, please. Staff employed multiple approaches in reaching out to stakeholders in the sign code update process, including presentations and open houses, an online presence on the city's website, repeated notices in the city edition and Westminster window, use of social media, and even one-on-one interviews. Interested parties were encouraged to respond to an online visual preference survey, to submit questions, and to offer comments and opinions. Input was solicited from all of the groups featured on the slide. Next slide, please. To assist with the update process and to ensure the best possible results, the city enlisted the support of a consultant team led by White and Smith LLC. And that included Winter and Company and Kendrick Keith Collaborative. The effort was broken into two phases. The first phase was focused on data collection and included public outreach and extensive research. The second phase used the feedback received to inform policies, decisions, and making of a new code draft. The fourth draft was made available for public review and comment on October 1st of this year and has been updated with new drafts as they have become available. The new code is scheduled to be presented at a public hearing and first reading before you all tonight. And if you approve it at first reading tonight, would be adopted with your second reading, which has been moved up from December 28th to December 21st, as you see at the bottom right of this slide. Next slide, please. This is the sign that got it all started. This is the sign that was the centerpiece of the Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court decision. One of the most important requirements of the new sign code is to be compliant with the tenants of this decision. Essentially, this decision mandates the government regulation of signs be content neutral. What this means in simplest terms is that governments may not impose limitations or grant allowances based on the content of a sign's message. However, things like location, size, materials used, and quantity permitted may still be regulated. Next slide, please. Existing sign types receiving greater allowances. These next three slides highlight some of the changes proposed with the new sign code. All of the sign types shown in this slide may be found in the currently existing sign code and are granted greater allowances in the new code due to feedback received during the process. These greater allowances may provide for such things as more sign face area or a higher number of a given sign type allowed, depending on the parameters of the building or the site involved. For example, for a 10-plus acre property, the city currently allows monument signs of 100 square feet in area, while the new code allows 150 square feet. Another new allowance for monument signs is that the number of tenants restriction has been removed. You see in the photo here that there's only six tenants allowed. There's only room for six tenants. That allowance has been, or that restriction rather, has been removed. A final example has to do with wall signs, which are currently allowed 300 square feet in total area on a building. This is being increased to 400 square feet. Next slide, please. These sign types are new to the proposed code or much or have a much expanded availability in the proposed code. For example, EMC signs or Electronic Message Center, which you see an example of here. Were previously allowed only for institutional users. This limitation is no longer permissible under Reed versus Gilbert. Under the new code, EMCs would become available for all commercial users throughout the city. Roof signs are allowed in the downtown and station area-specific planned districts. This was done to increase possible creativity in these two unique areas. Skyline signs are added with the new draft to make it easily possible to identify taller buildings of three stories or more. Next slide, please. Many sign types found in the existing code have been re-categorized in the new code. Most of these sign types have new allowances as well. Incidental signs now include all temporary signs, many other types of permanent signs such as menu boards, real estate signs, directional signs, and so forth, with a larger quantity of signs permitted. Internal signs allow for wayfinding within larger commercial settings such as the Orchard Town Center. And don't count against monument signage along the public right-of-way for these developments. Next sign, excuse me, next slide, please. Staff recommends that the council hold this public hearing tonight and that the council grants approval of the proposed amendment to the Westminster Municipal Code, which revises and completely replaces Title 11, Chapter 11 sign regulations. Next slide, please. Staff believes that this proposed code amendment, if approved, will provide a practical, improved, well-organized, and easy-to-understand sign code to the sign users of the city. Thus, approval of the new sign code supports the visionary leadership, effective governance, and proactive regional collaboration city strategic plan goal. The new code was created using a collaborative and transparent process, which supports the vibrant, inclusive, and engaged community goal. Measures taken to ensure that signs are appropriately designed, numbered, and sized to support the beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city goal. And finally, because the new code would provide many new sign opportunities for local businesses, the dynamic diverse economy goal is also supported. It should be noted that after the City Council Study Session on November 2nd, the sign code was presented to the Planning Commission on November 10th. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to the City Council. Thank you for your attention, and I would be very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gurman, thank you very much. Counsel, this is your opportunity if you have any questions of staff before we open this up for public comments. All right, I'm not seeing any questions from Council. And I know we just went through this extensively in a study session just recently. This time, I will open up the comments to the public comments. Ms. Parker, I think you have one person that wanted to speak on this. And Mr. Shire, once we're done with this item, I'll come back to you and we'll try to get your comments on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'm going to allow the audio for Juliette Abdel to share with council and the audience her comments regarding this public hearing. Ms. Abdel, and I, there you are. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your continuing to meet and conduct.
Ms. Abdel, we can't hear you, unfortunately.
Can you all hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for continuing to meet and conduct business as normal as possible. As the President of the Westminster Chamber tonight, I just wish to speak on behalf of the sign code that's up for consideration this evening. For those of you that have been with us since the start about six years ago, the chamber voiced concerns about the present sign code. In fact, going as far as redlining and rewriting parts for feedback from our business community. Several counselors on the dais and others that are worth mentioning, including our former Mayor Pro Tem Alberto Garcia, understood this process and voiced support and encouraged our city to place this as a strategic plan priority. And over the last three years that I've been with the Westminster Chamber, I've watched the progression of this effort through letters encouraging council to pursue this matter, public comment on sign code changes, and personal testimony we continue to receive. Throughout this process, the focus of the chamber has been to ensure our businesses in Westminster are provided a fair and equal footing in the 21st century competitive world we live in. A year ago, we met with city staff on preliminary draft changes, and this was after open houses and the online public comment, which we actively participated in. We had concerns with the proposed draft and expressed those on behalf of our members. City staff took our strong comments back and incorporated many of those suggestions in the revision sent in the summer of this year. And our core group consisted of our Government Affairs Chair, our General Counsel, former Mayor Pro Tem and Strategic Advisor Garcia, and the Jeff Co. Business Lobby Vice Chair and myself, all of which were at the table. Through email exchanges and virtual meetings, we were able to exchange thoughts, making recommendations, and of course, working in collaboration to find a proposal that worked for all parties. While the sign code before you tonight is not perfect, it represents significant progress. It is a major step in the right direction. We will continue to assess its merits through feedback from our members and look forward to continuing to make bigger strides in the future. The sign code is an adaptive process as growth occurs, density, and unexpected factors such as COVID arise. And it will need to continue to adapt for the benefit of the business and symbiotically the overall community. The chamber has stated, and we will continue to state that at present, the Westminster Chamber supports the revision to the sign code before you tonight. And we ask council for your support as well. We thank the city of Westminster for the collaboration during this process and look forward to continuing working together on behalf of our business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdel. Ms. Parker, anyone else that you have that wishes to testify on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor. That was the only resident who had requested live testimony, and we received no voicemails regarding this item. So that is all at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. With there being no one else from the public that has comments at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will move on to figuring out who was got in the queue first, since I've got about five of you, I think. Mr. Seymour, I believe you are up for the motion for item 10A. If you would, please, Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'd be my honor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill number 38 on first reading to approve the proposed amendments to the Westminster Municipal Code, which revise and replace Title 11, Chapter 11 sign regulations.
Counselor Demott, I think I have you for the second.
Second.
Okay, I think Mayor Pro Tem Sights, I think you have comments or questions?
I do. I want to say thank you first to Mr. Gurman, to Mr. McConnell and Ms. McConnell, in addition to Mr. Munch for their work on this. We also owe a big thank you to the Westminster Chamber and to the business community and for all of the other stakeholders that participated in this. Being a member of the council when this got on the strategic plan, I have to say it probably was a case of convergent evolution where staff recognized with that ruling, the Gilbert ruling, that they needed to update the sign code. But I don't believe that was omnipresent in council's mind when this got on the strategic plan goal. The goal was to make sure that our sign code was still serving the needs of businesses and protecting the aesthetics and the quality of life for our residents. And I have to say, I think you struck a good balance, and I appreciate the amount of effort and thought that went into this. And I know things always take longer than we we hope. 2016 till today feels like a long time. But it has been, you know, anxiously awaited by the business community, and I am happy it is here today. So thank you all. And a big thank you to former Mayor Pro Tem Alberto Garcia. This was a passion project for him. Honestly, I feel his fingerprints are all over this.
Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just say thank you first to staff for working hard on this. I know when it came back to us maybe about a year ago, maybe a little less than that, and there was concerns about some of it, and you guys worked through a lot of those. I think that Mrs. Abdel spoke truly when she says it's not perfect, but it's a far step forward from where we're at today. And so I hope that we continue to listen to the business community in ways that make this even better. And that this is just a starting point, because I think that it truly will help our businesses. And, you know, as I spoke earlier on in the evening, our businesses are hurting. So this is a big win at a good time so that we can hopefully, this will be a part of the puzzle that helps us back together. Lastly, when this came about, I certainly was very involved with the chamber in listening to them, many different people, Mike Lazar, Brian Head, David Carpenter, Rich Seymour, when he was with the chamber, working very hard to advocate for the business community and the signs. And I have to say too, from sitting in council meetings prior to being in council, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia, I've got to know very well over the years. And on many things, we're about the odd couple when it comes to policy, but I think this is one where he was a fierce advocate for making this happen before or during council and after. And so I'm sure he has a big smile tonight getting to see this pass. And so I thank him also for his work on this, and I look forward to voting yes on this.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you. I'm going to sound like an echo chamber here, so I'm going to keep it real brief. But I just wanted to thank staff for this report and the summary. It is super helpful to have years of knowledge in just a condensed version for council to read. So thank you for that. And then just thank you to the Westminster Chamber and to all the people mentioned and involved in this and maybe not mentioned. Thank you for the this work, great work that we've done on this great stride forward for not only Westminster, but for our businesses in Westminster. Thank you for this, and I look forward to approving.
Counselor Bowles?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, I'm going to sound like a broken record here. I want to thank everyone who is involved in this. We've had a great number of our city, City Hall team have been involved. I want to thank them for all of their hard work. It's been a long time coming, and thank you for all of your work on this. And Ms. Abdel and the Westminster Chamber have been very involved, and I want to thank them as well. And there's a whole group of people in the Board of Directors that I know that had different committees involved with this. So thank you for that. And thank you for the Westminster Chamber and their involvement. And of course, former Mayor Pro Tem Alberto Garcia, who has been involved all along the way and helped get this initiate, this whole thing initiated, thank him as well. So I just want to say I'm thankful that everyone had got involved in this process, and I plan on voting for this tonight. So thank you.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank staff for their work, but I also want to point out we had a great opportunity for a quick set and review after one of our study sessions. And I do want to thank Deputy City Manager Jody Andrews and Director Downing for that part in allowing my voice to be heard on that, and also to Ms. Abdel's for continuing the vision that that one of the primary items that drove the Westminster Chamber in its formative years. So I want to thank everyone that's had their part in this, and the business community is looking forward for this opportunity. So I want to thank everyone that's had their part in this, and the business community is looking forward for this opportunity.
Other comments by council members? All right, seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is item 10A2, Council's Bill number 38. This is a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes, please.
And Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The side on 10A2, Council's Bill number 38 passes on a seven oh vote. We're going to try one more time for us to be able to get Mr. Shea in. So, Ms. Parker, did you have him up now?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Shea has joined the meeting. Mr. Shea, if you would unmute yourself, please. You may have to go to the control panel and click on the microphone icon to unmute yourself. City Council, if you could just stand by for one moment. I just sent Mr. Shea a request to unmute his audio. If you can just give him one more second.
Thank you.
Is this the same technology we were just using for the previous caller?
Yes, that's correct. When a resident requests to sign up live, we send everyone a link as well as a set of instructions. And so if you could just give us one more second, I'm sending another request for him to unmute his microphone. Mr. Mayor, I just got a message from Mr. Shea stating that his screen is freezing. I'm not sure if we have a connection issue at this time, but I will continue to try and troubleshoot this with him if you'd like to move on.
All right, we'll move on. If it becomes available later on, we'll try to make accommodations if we can. All right, moving on to item 10B, this is Council's Bill number 39. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to pass Counselors' Bill number 39 on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds from the State of Colorado's Department of Human Services Office of Behavioral Health Co-Responder Services Program Grant in the amount of $308,224 to the 2021 budget of the general fund.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, you were the second.
Second.
Okay, now we got you. All right, thank you. I have a first and a second on the motion for Council's Bill 39. Is there any comments or questions from council? Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem sites, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say I think this is a wonderful program, and I'm happy that we're going to be applying for a renewal of this grant. I wanted to give some statistics and a little background for folks that are listening. So this program has served police officers by allowing them to use professional mental health services when necessary, and then serve the public by providing a resource and intervention during the times of crisis. This is, we've had great feedback from both the police officers and community members. So just in the first four months ending November 1st, 2020, co-responders have responded to 312 calls for service where they have been able to interview and assist those with behavioral health issues or crisis. And during that same period, the PD received 594 calls involved with someone suffering from behavioral issues or crisis. So we've had the ability to have a licensed professional intervene in 53% of the calls. This is, this is a great program. Thank you so much to our Police Department for pursuing this grant for my colleagues in 2019. I believe it's the same, same group we have right in front of us right now. All of us voted to allow them to go forward with this grant process. So I would just say that this is a great program, investing in the community and really trying to have the best outcomes for all involved. So thank you.
Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for those statistics. I think this is a really important issue, very close to me with, I have a child who suffers from some mental health issues. And I recall when we were doing strategic planning a couple of years ago, and the city manager asked, is mental health something that we want to add to our policy or not? And at the level that we're doing it, I think it absolutely makes sense, because mental health touches people every day. So anybody in our organization who deals with the public is going to run into mental health, because unfortunately, it is plaguing our nation as far as issues this year. Certainly, we have seen a rise in issues with mental health with the COVID crisis and the economic crisis that it's caused. And I just wanted to give a couple of other little things on this, because I know this is a hot topic as far as people who want to talk about reallocating money from the police or defunding police. This is really a partnership with the police is what it is. This gives, our Police Department has been forward-thinking for a long time as far as training the police officers to identify mental health. This gives them an extra tool to actually then have somebody there who can help that person who's in a mental health crisis. So I think this is a great program. It's hopefully something that we see more and more of in the state. And it's not about changing where we're allocating funds. It's about putting funds in a, in a needed place in our society. So I am happy to vote yes on this, and I'm glad to see that we have leadership in the Police Department who goes after these sort of initiatives.
Counselor Volz?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to add my support to this outstanding program. This is a great opportunity for us to have a program that de-escalates situations. So it's a chance to match people with much-needed resources, and I think we've all agreed what a positive program this is. So I just want to add my name to that. I also want to ask a quick question to the chief or deputy chief. We've had four or five months. I know that's not a long time, but in that four or five months of the early stage of this program, what have we learned? Is there, are we learning as we go some things that we didn't expect or things we didn't anticipate and, and ways to make the program even better?
Mr. Tripp, turn it to you, and then you can figure out who's going to.
Well, the chief is Tim Carlson, but Todd Reeves, one of the deputy chiefs, chiefs has been the real initiator and leader on this. So I, Tim, I'm not sure whether you, you're going to take this or you're going to pass it to Todd. Both would be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. I will turn that over to Todd Reeves to answer that question. Counselor Volz?
Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Counselor Volz, for that question. Yeah, this has been an incredible learning experience for us administratively and a lot for the police officers in really trying to better understand our behavioral crisis, mental health, and then, most importantly, the resourcing of where to take people or where people can seek help. As you know, prior to this, we only had the option of a hospital or a jail. Both incredibly ineffective, when we've now seen and been exposed to everything that's out there. So this has been a tremendous learning experience for the police officers who have welcomed this with open arms, and it's been an eye-opener for us as well to see how well this has functioned in our Police Department.
Well, thank you, Deputy Chief Reeves. That's, that's outstanding, and thanks for those comments. And I just want to commend our, our leadership and our Police Department for, for going after this grant and then making it work and tweaking it as we go and making it the best program it can be. And I'm glad to vote for this tonight, and thank you for all your work, and thanks for the officers who work, work hard on this every day. So thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Thank you, and thank you for staff. We had an opportunity as a council for an onboarding to really sit down with you and get more knowledge, not only into this program, but into our Police Department in and of itself. And to really see the aspects and how we've made positive change and effects in our community is really telling to our staff and to our department. So I just wanted to say that I fully support this, and thank you for the hard work for this. I think it's an important aspect that we're adding to, continuing to add to our department. So thank you.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't know that I could say any more than what's already been said, but I, I did want to take a moment to thank Chief Carlson and Deputy Chief Reeves and all of the Westminster PD. This is really thinking outside the box. This is what we really wanted to see when the national conversation turned to concerns over how how we handled mental health, and this is exactly what I think we all envisioned. So thank you for all your hard work and your tremendous thinking outside that box.
Any other comments from council? All right, seeing no other comments at this time. This is item 10B. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. This item 10B passes on a seven oh vote. Moving on to item 10C, this is Council's Bill number 40. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I moved to pass Counselors' Bill number 40 on first reading, authorizing the City of Westminster to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Revenue to facilitate collection of sales and use taxes from remote sellers.
Counselor Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion or questions by council? Mayor Pro Tem sites?
I just wanted to say that this will allow a lot of smaller retailers to easily submit sales tax if they choose to utilize this system, and I think a great debt of gratitude should go to State Representative Tracy Crafttharp, who has worked very tirelessly on this issue for quite some years, and to our own city staff. I believe Tammy Hitchens has been in, one of the stakeholders, making sure the interests of local government, because sales tax is so vital to our ability to provide services to our residents, making sure that it was a system that would work for us. So just wanted to say thank you to all of those individuals.
Counselor, Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too wanted to also say thank you to Representative Tracy Crafttharp and to Tammy Higgins, Higgins, Higgins in our city. This is, to me, this was fantastic. We just got a report a couple of weeks ago on how different businesses were doing in our city, and our online business, obviously, in the time of COVID, has practically doubled, if not almost tripled. It is tremendous, and to be able to utilize those sales and use taxes from our remote sellers, it allows us as a city to really have an income that we may not have had had we not had this bill at this time. So, big thank you. And intergovernmental agreements are, are, are just so, they're so valuable. I just, I love it when we work with other entities and we, we practice that not being just a silo in ourselves, but working with other people.
I believe that's the last comment I have. Any other comments or questions by council? All right, seeing, this is item 10C, Council's Bill number 40. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. The motion passes on a seven oh vote for Council's Bill number 40. Moving on to item D1. Counselor Demont, this reminder, this is a three-part piece, Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the new lease for $613,388 with JP Morgan Chase.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Item 10D1. All right, seeing none. We will move on to the vote. Ms. Parker, this is item 10D1, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
All right, moving on to the second part of this one. Counsel's Bill number 41. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to pass Counselor Bill number 41 on first reading, appropriating lease proceeds of $613,388 to the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund for the lease purchase of one Velocity Chassis Pierce Ultimate Configuration Fire Engine.
Mayor Pro, sides?
Second.
Any comments or questions on this one? Ms., Counselor Smith, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, sir. My question is, it looked like in the report, the fund was currently short by $432,000, and I'm just wondering if we were intending to be short, if we knew we'd be short, and how much we're contributing in order to try and make up that difference.
Mr. Tripp?
Yeah, Chief Hall or Tammy Hitchens, one of the two of you, would you like to have handle this? Thank you.
Mr. Tripp, this is Doug Hall, the Fire Chief. Because it involves a financial arrangement with the lender, I would, I would prefer to defer that to Director Hitchens.
Ms. Hitchens, are you available?
Yeah. I, I am available, but I am going to quickly pass this one off to Chad Smith. He's the one who did all of the negotiating and working with the, with the financing.
All right, Chad, would you like to answer the question?
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Can, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Yes, let me pull it up here. It says in the report that we were $432,000 short. Were we intending to be short, and how much were we contributing to try and make up that difference now and in the future?
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
This is Doug Hall, the Fire Chief.
Yeah.
I, I'm thinking Counselor Lindsay may be referring to the next agenda item.
Is this?
This, this isn't.
Two, Council's Bill number 41 currently.
Oh, you're right. I'm so sorry. I'm on 42, I'm on the wrong agenda item.
I know you're in a hurry, but we're not here yet.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so to recover, since everybody's passing off trying to answer the question, you've got time to get ready for the question on the next item. So at this point, I'm going to come back to, I'm going to come back to Council's Bill number 41. Are there questions or comments on Council's Bill number 41? All right, seeing none on that one. Ms. Parker, let's try to get past this one.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
All right, council's bill number forty-one passes on a seven oh vote. Now, we'll move to item D3. Counselor Demont.
Yep. Move to authorize the city manager to execute a sole source contract with front range fire apparatus in the amount of up to seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for one Velocity Chassis Pierce Ultimate Configuration Fire Engine, which includes a contingency amount of eight thousand dollars.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes. Or second, sorry. Just ready to vote.
I have a motion and a second, but not before we get Counselor Smith's question in. Now, Counselor Smith, could you repeat it for the group?
I think we're still not on the right one, right?
We are on the D3.
Okay, let me pull up my, because I'm on, just looking at my agenda, which is different than the motions page. It says bill number forty-two supplemental appropriation of funds for the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus. That's the one.
You're still too far ahead of yourself.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. I'll wait.
Okay, so we have no questions at this time unless some other member of council does. Counselor Vols, you have a comment?
I just have a quick, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick comment. You know, I normally comment on when we have sole source contracts going out kind of regularly on really big items like this. But, you know, we've talked about this before. Chief Hall has talked about this before. And I, I've looked at the ones on here and they look like a lot of contracts where a lot of eyes were on them. And I trust our city manager's office and our, our leadership in our city that we're doing the due diligence and doing the right things. And I normally raise those issues. Tonight, I will not. I'm going to be voting for this. I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on item D3? Counselor Demont, you had a question or a comment? Not? Okay. Ms. Parker, we're going to try to get out of the item D as quickly as we can. Would you do another roll call, please?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. We'll start with you, Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Thank you, council. We are finally done with item D. We're moving on a seven oh vote for the item D3. Now, moving to item E1. This is council bill number forty-two. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass council's bill number forty-two on first reading, providing for a supplemental appropriation of funds to the 2020 budget of the general and general capital outlay replacement and general capital improvement funds.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now, we will turn to Counselor Smith for her question.
Thank you. Okay, so in this report, it says the fund is currently short by four hundred and thirty-two thousand in order to fully fund these units. So, my question was, are we intending to be short? And how much were we contributing at the time? And do we have any kind of makeup to get to where we need to be?
Counselor Smith, this is Fred Kellum. This is Fred Kellum, and I'd like to answer this question. We had started accumulating funds for replacement a few years ago through carryover. At that time, we didn't have a replacement mechanism set up for the SCVAs. And so, we're getting close and we're going to do the final funding in the 2021 budget. But because of short budget reductions in our estimated revenues, it didn't look like we were going to be able to fund that in 2021. And then, I believe in September, the Fire Department received a reimbursement that was not budgeted. And we, it wasn't in the budget at the time, so now we're able to appropriate those funds to move forward to purchase. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Fred. Any other comments or questions on item 10E1?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have one more. I'm so, I'm so sorry. Um, so it said that in order to purchase these units, we are needing more storage for that, to hold that capacity. I know that in onboarding talks, there's, there was thoughts as far as maybe needing a new firehouse with a complete buildup of Westminster. So, would it be best used for, for funds for a storage building to be having a firehouse instead of a storage building? What are your, I know it would be more expensive, but what would the investment be if we did a firehouse instead of a storage facility?
Mayor. Yeah, at this time, Doug, I'll take this at this point.
Okay, sir.
This time, we don't have any plans for a new firehouse. There's not demand or need in the, in the service. And Doug can sure confirm that if you'd like me to have him do that. This is a relatively, although significant, it's a relatively smaller investment than building a new fire station would be. And at some juncture, maybe building, rebuilding a fire station, one of the six locations with more storage would be an option. We really have the need immediately and will continue to have this need, I think, ongoing. So, I've reviewed this with the staff and I'm very comfortable that this is a good recommendation. We had to move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. Ms. Parker, this is item 10E1.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes. This motion passes on a seven oh vote for council's bill number forty-two. Moving on to item 10E2, Counselor Demont.
Move based on recommendation of the city manager to find that the public interest would be best served by authorizing a sole source contract with municipal emergency services for the total amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and two dollars to purchase replacement self-contained breathing apparatus.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Parker. Item 10E2.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
And Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That takes care of item 10E. Moving on to item 10F1, resolution number forty-seven. Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number forty-seven, amending rate of contribution to the Fire and Police Pension Association statewide defined benefit plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for re-entry firefighters for the city of Westminster.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by any of the council members on item 10F1? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to Ms. Parker. This has been 10F1, resolution forty-seven. So, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Resolution number forty-seven passes on a seven oh vote. Mayor Pro Tem Sights, take the second of four parts, please.
Yes. I move to adopt resolution number forty-eight, amending rate of contribution to the Fire and Police Pension Association statewide hybrid plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for re-entry firefighters for the city of Westminster.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, 10F2, please. Resolution forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Resolution number forty-eight passes on a seven oh vote. Mayor Pro Tems, item F3, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number forty-five regarding amending the rate of contribution to the Fire and Police Pension Association statewide defined benefit plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for re-entry police officers for the city of Westminster.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of resolution number forty-nine. Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
All right, council, that's passing resolution number forty-nine on a seven oh vote. Moving to the final part of this item. Mayor Pro Tem Sights, resolution number fifty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number fifty regarding amending rate of contribution to the Fire and Police Pension Association statewide hybrid plan administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for re-entry police officers for the city of Westminster.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for item 10F4, resolution number fifty. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is the final item of F4, resolution number fifty for a roll call vote.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
And Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That concludes item F under item ten. This is the resolution number fifty, passes on a seven oh vote. Moving to the next item, item 10G. Counselor Vols, resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number fifty-one, approving the 2020 Water Conservation and Efficiency Plan.
Counselor Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the passing of item 10G, resolution number fifty-one. Are there questions or comments for any of the members of council? Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
I just wanted to say thank you for the excellent work in putting together this plan that's required of the city of Westminster every, I believe it is, and I can't recall right now, I believe it's every five years. So, thank you to, I believe it was Drew Beckwith, I believe, was the principal on this. So, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments from council on item 10G, resolution number fifty-one? Seeing none, Ms. Parker.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demont. Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
All right, thank you, council. I move item fifty-one forward on a seven oh vote. Next item on the agenda is council, is item 10H, resolution number fifty-two. And Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number fifty-two, establishing the city of Westminster 2021 legislative policy statement and 2021 lobbying protocols.
Counselor Vols.
I second the motion.
And Counselor Seymour, you have a question or a comment?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just laid on the queue.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other comments or questions on item number fifty-two? All right, hearing none, Ms. Parker, this is item 10H, resolution fifty-two. It's a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Thank you, council. That was resolution number fifty-two, passing on a seven oh vote. Moving on to item I1. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest would best serve by authorizing a negotiated contract from the sole source provider, Axon Enterprise, Inc., to provide conducted energy weapons tasers, body worn cameras, digital evidence management equipment, licenses, and cloud-based storage for implementation of a body worn camera program in the amount of five hundred, one hundred and forty-four, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars in 2021, plus a project contingency of sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for a total authorized expenditure of five hundred, sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars in 2021.
Mayor Pro Tem Sights.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council on item I1? Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that this has been a topic for, of discussion for a while. And so, and I know partially with some of the new legislation now, things like body worn cameras will be mandated on departments in Colorado. But the question that I had is, once these are purchased and, you know, we have them, I imagine there's some training and stuff, when do we see that the actual rollout of this will happen as far as the body worn cameras?
Deputy Barr, would you please take this, this on, please?
Yes, sir, I will. Thank you, Mr. Tripp. Thank you, members of council. Axon Enterprises is aware of our desire to take this forward and implement as quickly as possible. So, we are anticipating that our officers will be using them in the field by the end of February, if all goes well, which we expect that it will.
Okay, great. And then, one question I had as far as like training. So, initially, are they going to be doing, doing the training and then training our training officers for long term? Or what does that program look like as far as use? Because I know there's some stringent items around making sure that they're used properly in the legislation.
Correct. And that is one of the reasons, Counselor Demont, that we had asked to bring this forward sooner than the legislation required is we want to make sure that our officers are comfortable using them correctly. We have policies in place to manage the program. And so, they do send people on site to help train, and then we will have a cadre of officers that will be subject matter experts that will train our officers as well. We're also hiring a full-time person to manage the program for redaction and release of video.
Great. And then, I know that you have the full-time person. Will then that person, someone be cross-trained with them so that if that person's on, you know, whatever, that we have a redundancy in that position?
Yes, sir, we will. At this time, because of the package that Axon offers and the package that we are looking at, they have some capabilities with production that other companies don't offer. So, we are able to come into this with minimal full-time equivalent requests. As we move forward in the program, we'll have to see how that plays out for an agency our size. But we are building redundancy in with current staff that we're going to cross-train for those very types of events.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief, for those answers. I appreciate it. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. What happens, because much like Counselor Vols, I was kind of questioning the sole source for this, for what we're doing here. But in your staff report, it Thank you. What happens, because much like Counselor Bowles, I was kind of questioning the sole source for this, for what we're doing here. But in your staff report, it describes very well about why we're going to the sole source as compared to SourceWell as well as value point, as well as the value point system. But my question is, is what happens if we decide to switch companies? How difficult would it be for systems to talk with one another if we decided to switch? And that kind of leads into my cloud-based question of who, who owns the cloud base? Is it Axon or is it the city of Westminster?
Well, Axon owns the actual cloud base, but we have the rights to obviously use that. And we, I don't have the answer to that, Counselor Smith, as to what if we switch to a different vendor. I can get that answer from our, our vendor, but I don't know the answer to that exactly. As far as switching systems, even though we're looking at a ten-year contract on this, we were able to buy the contract, switch to a different vendor should a future council decide that's the direction that they want to go. And then it would be a matter of migrating data.
Okay, thank you. I just know that going from one system to another, not specifically in this, but, for example, Oracle Doorwork, they kind of think can be very costly and expensive and time-consuming. So was just wondering if staff has wanted to the nuances of what that change might look like in the future. But, thank you for, for trying to answer that.
Other comments or questions on this item? Seeing no other comments, Ms. Parker, I one, please.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. It takes care of item I one for part one with a seven oh vote. Counselor Scully, would you take the second part, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize up to nine additional one-year renewals for the body worn camera program with Axon Enterprise, Inc., subject to annual appropriations in the amounts as follows that include a project contingency of sixteen thousand four hundred eighty-eight dollars per year. For each year, the contract is renewed, five hundred eighty thousand forty-four dollars for years twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, and six hundred thirty-one thousand two hundred six dollars for years twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty. The annual authorized expenditure is based on a ten-year contract that will result in a savings of two million four hundred seventy-one thousand forty dollars over the contract period.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, this is the second part of I.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. That concludes item I with a seven oh vote on part two. Moving to item J. On the agenda, this is ten J, Counselor Bowles.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager execute the purchase of twenty twenty-one golf carts with Maisick Rocky Mountain Golf Cars in the amount of six hundred thirty-two thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars with a contingency of thirty-one thousand six hundred eighteen dollars for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed six hundred sixty-three nine ninety-three dollars. This purchase includes the trade-in of all golf cart fleet purchased in twenty seventeen.
Counselor Seymour.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a question from Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is similar to my earlier question, and I know city manager Tripp talked about going through all these items very vigorously, but I'd like the same kind of explanation that I did around IT stuff as far as why this year for the golf carts.
Certainly, Counselor Demott. I'll take a run at this, and if that's not enough, I can, I'll bring Chris Johnson on. First of all, let me tell you that, explain that the money to make this purchase is money that's, that we've saved from golf revenues over the course of the last four or five years. We made a decision a few years ago that it would be in the best financial interest of the city to actually own the carts, buying them on a lease purchase. And we started to save money, so that money is in reserve funds to, to make this purchase. The reason it's important this year is that we're at the end of four years with these carts, and it's been our experience that in year five, all batteries need to be replaced. As just one example, the battery replacement cost alone is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And the director and his staff estimate that actually, over the course of the next four years, by making this purchase this year, we save about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year during that time. So I really did press this because golf cart purchases is something that would seem to be able to be delayed and maybe allowing that cash to be available. But the cash was actually created with money that came into the golf courses for this purpose. But then moreover, we're really running up against some extreme maintenance costs being into year five with these carts. And so we'd recommend your approval to, to make sure certainly have functioning golf cart. Inventory in twenty twenty-one.
Well, I, I appreciate that answer, and I know you obviously know a fair amount about parks and rec. One quick question I'd ask, though, as a follow-up, what, what is the typical useful life that we get out of one of these golf carts with maintenance where we could, I mean, how long should we expect to get out of a golf course? Is four years pretty normal with a golf cart?
Yes, as a, as a, as a group, it is. But very specifically, I, I use the, the battery analogy there because we know for certain that the batteries are going, are going to need to be replaced and related work with that after four years. But, you know, there's a variability to their condition beyond that, and it's been the experience of our golf staff that in year five, the condition is unreliable, which means we're putting golf carts out into the course with people that are paying a fee for that cart, and they're breaking down, that sort of thing. So this is that sweet spot that they've recommended, and it's, it's also been my experience.
Great, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Other questions from council? All right, Ms. Parker, this is item ten J. A roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Item ten J passes on a seven oh vote. Moving on to item ten K. Do we have a motion? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on a recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest is in, is best served by authorizing city manager to execute a negotiated contract with Burns and McDonald Engineering Company, Inc., in the amount of one million two hundred fifty-one thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars for engineering design services for the Water Twenty Twenty-Five Westminster Boulevard Raw Water Pipeline Extension Project, and authorize a contingency in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred forty-four dollars for a total authorized expenditure, one million three hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have two others in the queue, it looks like. Let me start with Counselor Scully. Did you have a comment, or were you trying to make the motion?
I was trying to make the motion, sir.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem sites.
I was also trying to make the motion, but I just wanted to say this is an example of us implementing forward-looking plans on serving our water utility and in turn serving our residents now and in the future. So this is part of that forward planning to make sure we're doing a good job in those areas.
Counselor Demott.
You made it.
First question is, do we, do we own the property now for the, the new plant if we're moving forward with engineering pieces? I know that we've had some talk about that, but I wasn't sure if we actually have purchased and acquired a site for this.
We haven't completed the purchase, Counselor Demott, and I, I would ask that city attorney Decker come in on this, or maybe our real estate folks want to, if they want to give a, a deeper explanation than I'm about to provide. We have exercised our legal right to move forward with this acquisition, and we're in a, in a stage right now where the courts will be establishing a price for that. And so we're, we are certain of the purchase, or we would not be moving ahead with this particular agenda item tonight. But Kristen or, or Chase, would either one of you want to add to that?
Ms. Decker? You need to unmute. You're muted on your end.
City Attorney Decker, it could possibly be your headset. There is a mute button that you might check. Is that better?
There you go.
Boy, this is the night of snafus. We do have immediate possession of the property, and we are negotiating the price of the property. But yes, we've been granted immediate possession, but we do not own it at this point. We would have to agree upon the price first.
Can you explain to me what that means in non-attorney terms? Is that we, domaining it, are they selling it to us on their own will, or what, what, what does that mean?
It's, it's, there's a three-panel commission, or I'm sorry, a three-person commission that's been established, and right now we are exchanging documents through the court to establish the price of the land. So this three-person commission will decide what the value of the property will be.
An easy way to say is we have two appraisals, and they don't match.
Exactly.
Yep, okay. That's what I was trying to understand. I've never heard of having to go through a commission to get a, a price on, on something you're buying, so.
Well, it's, it's through the eminent domain through condemnation proceeding.
Okay, and so that was my question, and we're, we're eminent domaining this. I, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, yes. We are.
And so at some point, that's going to come forward for us to have to think about and approve as a council?
Already been done, Counselor Demott. We already approved it during the start of the negotiation to use eminent domain if needed. And it was done by this council.
I, I guess, okay, so. I guess I don't have any other questions. I didn't realize that we were moving forward with that. I know that it was put forward to as go negotiate on it, and if that had to be used, it was going to be used. I didn't know that. It wouldn't come back to us till we found out that that's the direction we're going. So. That's all my questions.
Counselor Smith. If you have any other questions, feel free to email me or city attorney Frankel. I would be happy to answer anything.
Yeah, I mean, I, I might have to do that because I'm not sure what, what questions I should be able to ask since some of that doesn't happen in open meetings, so.
Right.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I was looking to, not necessarily questions, I don't, this has been so far off our plate as far as this particular program and project. And I'm wondering if I can ask that we table this to get more of an in-depth presentation from staff on where we're currently at. Because much to like what Counselor Demott just asked, I thought we were in negotiation stages, which we are, but I didn't realize what process or timeline we were at. So I think it would be helpful for me, and if we don't table it, I would be a no vote tonight. But I would very much appreciate an update on where we're, where, where we are at with the Water Twenty Twenty-Five program.
You know, I, I didn't, I didn't know these questions were going to come tonight, or I might have been able to check and see with the staff as, you know, what the timing was. So I hate to put him on the spot here. But Max, can you tell me, is there, is there a reason in terms of the timing of the overall program here that you'd recommend that we not defer this tonight and not table it? Can you, I apologize, but that's the question, and if you could help me out here, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Tripp. This is Max Cursebaum, Director of Public Works and Utilities. The property that would be in question here tonight is, is not the property that we are attempting to acquire to build the plant. This is property that we would eventually need to proceed with easements for, to design and then build the raw water lines that bring, that would extend the raw water system from its current location in the vicinity of Semper Water Treatment Facility to the new location. Those pipes need to get to that property in order to have a functioning plant. So what we're really talking about is the, there will be a need for raw water lines, and then following this, the finished water or the treated water lines that bring that water from the plant back to the high-service pump station. So this is just one in a series of contracts that is leading us toward the eventual construction of the new plant on the designated land that Kristen Decker described as being in process for acquisition. I would recommend that we continue this evening, again, for the purpose of, we, this, this is probably the, the seventh or eighth contract we've brought to you for, for various approval. This merely gets us the design work in order to build those, the raw water line that's necessary. So this is just a design effort. It will include an analysis of alternatives to identify the best routing. It will also give us an opportunity to do some additional corrosion control on raw water lines that are already built. So it's a, it's kind of a multi-purpose contract, but again, this is just the design effort, not a construction effort. And I do recommend that we proceed and keep, keep things moving toward the twenty twenty-five target of a completed plant.
All right, Counselor Demott, you had another question?
I understand what Max was just saying. The problem is, is I feel like things have moved along a lot further than I realized they were at. I, for me, I feel like I am enough out of the loop where I'm surprised we haven't gotten an update to this point. So I'm, I'm kind of in the same boat as Counselor Smith, or I really am. If I can't get more information, I don't know if I can vote on this. And I understand they're building blocks, but they're building blocks towards a specific thing. And so I'd like to know where the overall strategy is at. We're having all these different water meetings that talk about our water structure, and I know there's lots of different people in the utility. But I, it would be nice to have an update before, before this came in front of us.
Ms. Dick, I hear you had a question or comment?
Just a comment, Mayor, Mr. Mayor. This, the, it's a very slow process, Counselor Demott, and the, the actual trial where the commissioners consider the evidence before them is not scheduled until the end of next year. So there is time to give council an update. It just got scheduled. We are just now beginning the process of sharing the information that each party is requesting.
And, and I appreciate that, and that's good information. I guess where I'm still a little frustrated is these are all, again, building blocks towards something, other pieces, bigger pieces, we're going to have to approve at some point. And so at some point, we have blocked ourselves in to this is what you're going to do. And so that's what I'm uncomfortable with, without having some more context and maybe having some updates where that stuff is at. And so that's what I'm uncomfortable with, without having some more context, and maybe having some updates where that stuff is at. Even if it's far off, you know, it would be nice to understand exactly where we're at with things.
You know, I don't really want to, I don't want to belabor it tonight, but I would say that we feel like we have very clear direction that we're going to build a water treatment plant on this location, and we're proceeding with acquisition. You know, that's clearly not understood by all seven of you, so what I'd suggest is that we give the public works staff a chance to maybe construct some of the documents that have led up to this, to remind you of the actions that you've taken previously. We also have a meeting tomorrow evening, and although the agenda is full, I'd suggest that maybe we take a few minutes of that meeting tomorrow night and get the other questions that you'd like answered, you know, that relates to the water treatment, the 2025 water treatment plant construction, the acquisition of the land, and try to create a packet for you that reconstructs this. I certainly do appreciate the fact these are complicated long-term projects, and there's lots of actions involved. But I can tell you that we are very clearly moving forward with the 2025 program, to build a water treatment plant, to build it in this location, and to be able to meet the requirements of the plant that we currently have. It's going to go offline by a date certain, so we'll construct documents for you that provide an update to you, and I think then summarize those, and then would be open tomorrow night to hearing maybe more detail as to what could help you, and help bring you up to speed and make sure you're familiar with the status of this project.
Any other comments from council? Before we make a move on this, as we've talked about before, when we approved the 2025 plan as a council, there was a lot of moving pieces on this, and as Ms. Decker said, this right now, because this is a civil issue, not a criminal case, it's not even going to see the light of daylight in a hearing until the end of next year. We can't afford to stop everything. We know we're going to get the right of the property. That's already been determined. What the issue in the court is, what are we going to end up paying for it? Each party, us and the seller, have submitted appraisals. The appraisals don't match, so the court will decide on that. But we can't afford to keep stopping every project because we have so many moving parts to it. We have to hit a target of a 2025 plant. We have to have an operating water system and a plant to operate it on. I don't have any problem with us talking about this more tomorrow night because we have another meeting with the council on our water rates and stuff. But we just simply can't continue to shut down projects because we've lost the connection between the times these keep coming up. So I don't support delaying this, and if there's a couple of council members at this point don't feel like they're comfortable with it, no. But we have to keep the city moving forward. We have to get a water system put together. Councilor Demont, do you have another comment?
I appreciate what you're saying, but just, so there's context to why I'm going to be voting no. I'm voting no because it's not that I don't know that there's pieces we voted on. It, to me, feels clear that some members of council have information such as we were going forward with eminent domain that I wasn't aware of. So I like to be comfortable with what we're spending money on, and I'm not comfortable with this because I don't feel like I'm in the know. So hopefully, the next time one of these comes up, I can vote along with the majority, but on this one, I'm going to have to say no because just off of, I need to start getting comfortable with information, and these are far apart, and it's, it's a matter of trying to understand where we're at along the process so that I don't feel like I'm out of the loop.
All right, let me correct one item. Nobody knew that there was eminent domain that everybody didn't know. This has all been presented in staff gentleman memorandums. You have voted on it as the council member. If you don't recall it, I can't help that. But don't accuse some council members of knowing something that you don't have the same information on. That is totally inappropriate.
As inappropriate it is. You will not scold me, sir.
I will, and when you're acting like you're accusing some council members of knowing something that you don't know, everybody had the same information. Councilor Smith?
I will be voting no on this, this evening, because I don't feel comfortable not feeling like I have enough information. And I, while it may have been presented to us within the last year, I honestly feel that a lot has come at us on every angle, not only with all of the information with COVID, but with water and such. So I don't feel like I have a good grasp as far as what's been presented here tonight. And yes, while we have to keep the city moving forward, I absolutely do not have to vote on something that I don't feel comfortable with. There is a rhyme and reason for slowing things down, taking time to really understand where we're at, and I don't feel like that has been a juxtap of where we're going. And so I really cannot get on board with this, and we'll be voting no.
Councilor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say I didn't have any information more than anyone else, so I do want to say that. However, if we do need to have some follow-up and additional meetings and additional information about this information on tonight's, in tonight's packet, I don't want it to happen tomorrow. I guess I would propose I don't want it to happen at tomorrow night's meeting. That's, that was dedicated for water rates. I would like for that. That's what we have been reading about. We're given information about. I'd like to stick to that. If we do an additional meeting on this agenda item down the road, I think that would be legitimate. We have counselors who have requested that, and I would support that. But I don't want to have that particular discussion tomorrow night. I think we need to focus on water rates at this point where we are now, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Other comments from council? Ms. Decker?
I just wanted to go back and look at and found a resolution authorizing the city attorney to move forward with negotiations on, let me pull it up again.
Well, Kristen's doing that. I've had a text message from the, from the Public Works and Utilities Director reminding me that we have a full agenda tomorrow evening, and that my expectation that we could spend maybe 15 minutes on this or so gathering information and questions, not, not trying to bring everybody up to speed that's, that's not up to speed on this, that we would gather information. He suggested a study session down the road. I can tell you there's only one study session. There was one this month, and there's one next month, and I think in February also because of holidays, so it may, there may be a need, if you desire, just to schedule a separate study session during the course of the next couple of months to bring you up to speed on these issues.
All right, Ms. Decker, can you go back to your comment?
Yes, sir. The date of the resolution approving this, allowing the city manager or the city attorney to move forward with I'm just going to read you the title of it. Sorry about that. It's a resolution to acquire or condemn real property interest for the Water 2025 project, and it's the city manager is authorized to proceed with negotiations to acquire such property on the basis of the appraised value or such higher value. Authorized to acquire such property, the city attorney is authorized to take all necessary legal measures to acquire the property, including proceeding with condemnation of the property against the owner or owners. And there's, there's more, but this was dated July 22 of 2019.
Other comments from council? Ms. Parker, you have a roll call vote for item K.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Seymour?
No.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont? And Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Council motion on item 10K passes on a four-three vote. Council, you have the option of stopping now and doing a discussion on the city's response, or we can hold that and finish up the last vote item, which would be 11, and then come back to item L.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to check and see if the resident who is, who had tried to do public comment is still, is available, or has that?
I have no indication that they've been able to reconnect him yet.
Mr. Mayor and Mayor Protem Sights, just to give you a quick update, the mayor's correct. The resident who was wishing to connect live connected and disconnected multiple times. Staff has communicated with him multiple times. He indicated if he was unable to connect that he would leave a voicemail. We continue to monitor the voicemail box, and at this time have not received anything from the resident.
Okay, let's try to get item 11, so if there's anyone who wants to drop off, and then after that, staff can go, and then we'll come back to the discussion on COVID updates. And then as soon as we're done with that, we'll be done. Let's moving on to item 11A, Council's Bill number 35 on second reading. Mayor Protem Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselors' Bill number 35 on second reading, amending the zoning of the subject property of a .6 acre parcel generally located at 3630 West 73rd Avenue, 7287 Lowell Boulevard, and 7277 Lowell Boulevard. The parcel is currently zoned C1 commercial. The owner is seeking to rezone the property to planned unit development.
Councilor Vols?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second for item 11A. Comments or questions by council? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, 11A is a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Counselor Demont?
No.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
No.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselors' Bill number 35 passes on a four-three vote. We have had a request for a short bio break. It's now 8:20. Let's come back at 8:20, I'm sorry, 9:18. We'll come back at 9:25, 9:25, and we'll be back. All right, Mr. Tripp, I think everyone is back at this point. Staff that wants to do the update on the COVID, please?
I do not hear anybody.
I apologize for coming with food in my mouth. For the COVID report tonight, we have a data report by Public Works Utilities Director and the E O C Chair Max Kirschbaum, followed by an update on our restaurant sustainability assistance program by Jenny Grafton and an update to you on the Public Health Order Ambassador Program by Jason Gank. And I'll just ask them to fall in line and make their presentations and answer your questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Trip. Jody, if I could get the slides for the case update, please. Yep, hold right there. That's perfect. Thank you. Okay, Mayor and Council. This evening, a couple of things that I would point out to you, number one would be to the positive, you'll notice that the arrows on the slide tonight are all pointing in a better direction. They're all pointing in a downward direction. That in, that in itself is, is a bit of good news. You, as we look at the case data across the top row for state Adams County, Jefferson County. They, they have dropped over the last week and as I looked at this data just before the meeting started this evening to try to get to today's update. The, the numbers are, in all cases, are pretty similar to the, the numbers that you see here on the slide that are from Friday. So they've held fairly steady. On the percent positive line, the second line. Unfortunately, the one yellow on that chart is has changed with today's data and Jefferson County's data is back a little bit over ten percent, which would put it back into that orange category. It's about ten point six percent. Uh, the other, the other piece I'll point out to you on hospitalization. And then before we go to the next slide, you see here shown as sixteen seventy five. As of, as of the end of today's data, that number is shown at fifteen eighty five. So again, another small incremental decrease in the currently hospitalized hospitalizedized number. If you kind of keep that in mind as we go to the next slide, please. And you'll see here with the hospitalization data that we're still on a downward trend from the peak that occurred on December second for, for hospitalization numbers. Been listening to a comment from the state epidemiologist this morning. As they were discussing, I'm, I'm sorry, over the weekend, as they were discussing if or whether there would be a, an impact to case data and hospitalization data from the Thanksgiving holiday. It doesn't appear to have shown up yet if it did. And her comment was that perhaps some of the, the good behaviors that as a result of, you know, a wide media campaign may have offset some of the not so good behaviors or an overall satisfactory result. So, um, you know, I would take these while the numbers are still in the red and they're high. I would take note that they are moving back in a, in a downward direction. So that too is a positive and, and I do think there's something to be said for the, the great media campaigns that are taking place in our own city, uh, among the counties and at the state level. I think it, uh, it probably does have a, an effect here that you're seeing. With that, that's all I have for this evening. Subject, any questions you might have?
Max, not a question, but just a reminder, and this is what we talked about with the chamber group this morning. Keep in mind, our test stations have been closed for about four days now and look to be closed at least again tomorrow because of the cold that the workers outside are not able to stay out there. Uh, if this temperature closes, once we get the test sites back up, such as Waterworld and the other ones in the other part of the metro area, we could see another spike in numbers simply because we've not been testing. Mr. Gank. Or whoever's next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Jason Gang, Director of Parks Recreation Libraries. I have a very brief update on the Public Health Ambassador Program that in the city of Westminster is one of the few cities in, in doing this effort as, as outreach. And, and we believe it's making a difference. Now, of course, it's hard to tell what that difference is. But we believe that it is making a difference and certainly our residents and businesses get good, get certainly full recognition with, with moving these things forward and accepting and being interested in this types of information. But, uh, the, the ambassador program is a partnership with Tri-County Health. Um, and we launched the program about a month ago. The first ambassadors began working on November sixteenth, and now there's eighteen of them. The ambassadors regularly walk through Westminster neighborhoods and businesses may distribute public health order packets, and I, and I believe the packets were, uh, the samples were said, uh, not the samples, but the identical packets were sent to council to take a look at, uh, here today. At this time, the focus area for distribution of the packets is still remains of historic Westminster where positive cases are the highest in Westminster. Since the launch of the ambassador partnership, it estimated that nearly four thousand packets have been distributed during the hundred and eighty five hours that the ambassadors have worked totaling uh, over about six thousand dollars in expenses of that staff time. Uh, all the expenditures will be reimbursed directly from Adams County Cares Fund. Uh, and just to give you an example, this past week, the ambassadors worked seventy six hours and distributed about fourteen hundred packets to those areas. And so that's just kind of a fun share and, and several things that the city is doing to help with awareness on the pandemic. Thank you.
Mr. Bowles, just to clarify, we did not ever get an I G A request from Jefferson County. Is that still correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, it's, it's Jason. I was just confirming, and Don jumped in. Thank you.
Okay, who's up next?
That would be me, Mayor. Uh, this is Jenny Grafton, Economic Policy and Development Manager, and thank you, um, and Council. We wanted to provide you with a brief update specific to restaurants this evening. We know, of course, that council is concerned for all of our local businesses right now, but especially restaurants due to the closure for indoor dining has placed some unusual hardships on that particular group. Um, so I'm first going to just give you a few quick updates on assistance programs that are out there so that council is aware in your conversations. And then we also have a topic we'd like to bring up for your consideration. On the matter of assistance, um, we do still have with city funded, uh, programs. The Small Business Stabilization Program, that is the one being run by Adams County utilizing our C D B G C V dollars. We have seen a real uptick in the last two weeks in that program, uh, moving the funds much more rapidly due to increased applications. Of the three hundred and seventy one thousand that was allocated to that program. They have, um, as of last Friday, processed over two hundred and twenty three thousand of that. And based on the applications they have in review, they believe they will be exhausting those funds very shortly. They're running into a similar situation with the non-Westminster Adams County businesses that are applying for, for those separate funds. And so would like to pose to council, we are set to receive a third tranche of C D B G C V funds in the amount of about five hundred and forty one thousand. To see if, if council would be supportive of working with that additional wave of funds to keep this program going, um, in support of small local businesses. And I will pause there for a moment if there's any questions about that or, or council would like to give high, high level, um, signal at this point, we would certainly be coming back with an amended I G A and a more formal, um, item for action.
Ms. Grafton, just to make sure, these are not funds that have to be expended by the end of this month? That's correct.
That is correct. The C D B G funds actually have quite an extended, uh, period for use.
All right, let me open it up for questions. Counselor Demont.
Thank you, Ms. Grafton, for the presentation or the information. Can you tell me what other ways that we can use that funds or those C D B G monies? In addition to what you're suggesting, or is that, I know that we've, we've got pretty creative with how we're supporting our residents. And so I'm just wondering where the best spend of those dollars are as everybody's hitting on hard times.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Demont. That's an excellent question. We're actually, um, we, the C D B G team met this morning to discuss that. Would not propose utilizing the full five hundred and forty one thousand at this time for that program. We do want to explore some other, um, areas, perhaps utility assistance is one, as well as vouchers or things of that nature to deal with some of our, our persons experiencing homelessness as a result of COVID nineteen. But, but to answer your question more directly. Think of all of the sort of usual C D B G restrictions in terms of low to moderate income individuals. But now specifically in response to impacts from the pandemic.
That's great. And you, you kind of hit on what my next area was going to be. I was specifically thinking around utility between water and, and electricity. And I'm curious, do, and you may not know the answer to this, but like, I know we have suspended, um, shutting off water for the year for people who get behind with the current situation. Do we have any idea, does, is the utility company doing the same as far as like electricity with it being in the cold months? And I, and I would be supportive of what you're saying is including, um, looking at those other programs that you mentioned, but I'm just curious if we have any sense of that.
So, uh, Counselor Demont, of course, with the, the special session, um, there was some emergency assistance passed specifically to energy utility billing. And we will want to go through and look at that very carefully as well as our own billing structure to make sure that we can line those C D B G dollars up in a way that's compliant. They did just release some guidance on this very late last week, and so we want to dig into that a bit further. Really, at this point tonight, just on the, the topic of the restaurants and the small businesses. We were going to suggest perhaps four hundred thousand, um, of that additional money going towards that program, still leaving us some time to explore the utility assistance in other areas, if that would be agreeable.
Yeah, well, um, my last thing I'd say is I'm, I'm supportive of everything you said. Unfortunately, there's more need than there is money to try to, um, offset the, the effects of what people are going through right now. But I am supportive and I appreciate all your guys' efforts to make sure that we are getting the best value out of this money as far as helping people. So thank you very much.
Your Pro Tem sites.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure I'm understanding how we would be using the C D B G dollars. We've heard, um, kind of how arduous all of the, um, compliances with those dollars and monitoring to make sure that we're using them on appropriate populations. And so how, I guess I'm trying to understand how that would work.
Sure, that, that's, uh, Mayor Pro Tem sites, that is one of the reasons we felt so fortunate to have this partnership with Adams County. So it is their C D B G staff that are reviewing and processing these applications from Westminster businesses to make sure that they meet the qualifications. They either have to be, um, provide, they, they have to be serving low to moderate income, um, employees, uh, in, in their business. And they can then utilize the funds either for their rent and operational expenses or for those salaries. But they are really very strictly tied to that low moderate income staff. Um, which of course affects a lot of our restaurants and other service industries. So that's where we have seen quite a few applications come through.
Thank you, um, for that explanation. And then finally, I wanted to ask, what would we be doing this in lieu of? I think, um, Counselor Demont also mentioned that, but I didn't hear the answer, I guess. I apologize. Would this be in, in lieu of emergency home repairs or what are the, what programs would we not be funding?
Actually, that it's, it's not applicable to our regular C D B G allocation, which we've, um, been speaking with, with council recently on, on that annual action plan. So all of that still remains intact. This is additional money that was put into the C D B G program with the CARES Act earlier this year. So these are funds over and above our normal programming.
Perfect. That makes me feel much better. Yes, I would be supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thi, I think at this point, uh, Ms. Grafton, it would be good to just explain the color of the C D B G because we do, are talking about two different kinds of C D B G funds. Our normal one was what we go through and plan out our projects, but this was a supplemental appropriation through Congress for C D B G for just this kind of work. It doesn't affect our original C B G grant awards.
That's absolutely correct, Mayor.
But for the public, that may not sound like it's a, a different program, but it is a different program that we got awarded.
Correct. And, and, and certainly if, if we are bringing this back as an amended I G A with Adams County to administer that program, we'll, we'll go into the detail in that memo and that document so that there's no, no confusion about the use of those funds.
Okay, let me poll the council real quick and make sure we have an agreement from a majority of council to move forward with your program. Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Demont. Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem sites.
Yes.
And the mayor as well. So Ms. Grafton, please, uh, move those forward as soon as you can so we can make sure to try to help as many people as we can through the administration for Adams County.
Thank you. Um, and on that note, I will, I will give you some immediate, um, feedback here. Uh, council will recall that we ran a, a round of the Westy Rise Winter Business Grant, um, recently in late October, early November. We went through those funds very, very quickly, um, had freed up some additional CARES funds, funded a few more businesses. Um, but as we're nearing the end of the year and, and staff has gone through and reconciled the various CARES, uh, funds, found some additional unallocated CARES money. We would like to, um, begin to, as soon as tomorrow, going to those applications from restaurants that were in that queue that we couldn't fund before and put an additional five hundred thousand to, um, help support forty one restaurants in, in Westminster. So that is not anything that council needs to take formal action on as those funds were already appropriated. But we did want to make sure that, that council was aware of that move and, and felt comfortable with that. So.
Again, this is, yeah, this is the dollars that have to be committed by the end of the month, correct?
That is correct. That's why we wanted to look at a way to move those funds very quickly. And, and we already have those applications reviewed and processed. They were just awaiting additional resources to fund them.
All right, just as a general question, is there any objection from council? All right, seeing none, Ms. Grafton, let's try to get those dollars so that we don't lose them.
Absolutely. And we'll report back to you when those are, are distributed.
All right.
That note, I'm just going to finally close out with one other assistance program before moving on to the policy question. Um, Adams County launched last Wednesday their Restaurant Stability Program. Um, that has been promoted both through Adams County and Westminster channels to the business community. But did want to make sure that council was aware of that supplemental program as well. So those are county funds, not, not city funds.
And do those have time, do they have a time restriction moment, Ms. Grafton?
I believe that they, they do, um, exactly if that is at the end of December or if they have an extension, I'm not certain. Um, I know they were processing fairly quickly as they were allowed to be used for rent and mortgage payments. They are a one-time ten thousand dollar grant maximum. And interestingly enough, there, there is a provision that these restaurants cannot have a drive-through. So, um, most of the other requirements are similar to what we've seen in some of the other restaurant programs. That was a new, a new twist. But we are directing people to that, that website, um, for applications and, and further consideration. It is not part of C D B G. There isn't an income component to that one.
Yeah, Mr. Trip, I'm going to come back to you for a minute. In regards to our CARES dollars. We authorize, we received over nine million dollars between Adams and Jefferson County. And if possible, at our COVID update next week. Can you give us some, uh, any updates to make sure that we've not had to return anything to any of the counties?
We can do that. We can provide you a, uh, an oral report next week, but we'll try to get a written summary of that ahead of time. Thank you.
Any questions from council on the COVID updates?
Mayor, my apologies. I, I left off one, one item I did need to bring to council.
All right, go ahead.
Sure. So, um, council has probably heard quite a bit of conversation in, in the region. Municipalities that have enacted ordinances, emergency ordinances to cap, uh, delivery fees. Municipalities that have enacted ordinances, emergency ordinances to cap delivery fees for third-party delivery services that restaurants have utilized. Aurora, Broomfield, Denver, and Commerce City have all moved forward with those types of actions. And essentially what they're doing is capping the fees that the service providers can charge to the restaurant at 15%. Initially, staff had taken a position of of not getting in the middle of those third-party sort of contractual negotiations. But what we're hearing from restaurants, and we are going to gather specific Westminster feedback for you. Is that in many cases, those fees are going up as high as 35% of the bill. And that is making it extremely difficult for restaurants when they already have very narrow margins to be able to afford to keep up with those services. They are not ones, they're not fees that they can negotiate easily. They have also found a number of of times where those. Third parties are promoting menus that they have not authorized online. So there are a number of concerns associated with that. And as such, Colorado Restaurant Association has been asking the municipalities to place temporary caps on those third-party fees. Along with some additional restrictions. That do things like ensure that 100% of the tips are passed on to the drivers, that that isn't used as a way to offset the fee caps. So staff is is looking to see if this is an item council would like us to pursue in greater detail and perhaps prepare a draft ordinance to that effect for your review. Or or where council is is on this matter at this time.
And Ms. Grafton, I personally have not had any restaurant contact me in regards to asking for the cap. I know there was part of the legislative process that just went through under the. Special session that had a bill that authorized that. But I've also know that some restaurants are using their own employees for delivery service. So. My question would be is asking for information on this. Is there a requirement? That restaurants use these delivery services? Because I'm not aware that there are. And some restaurants using their own employees are able to do that to help keep their people working. Is there something that you're hearing that we're maybe not?
We have, we have looked at some of the testimony provided in other municipalities that have passed the ordinances. We are looking to see if there's similar situations in Westminster. So to that item, Mayor. Some restaurants had conveyed the difficulty when when a an order goes through a third party that it has a lot longer time associated with it as the driver's making multiple deliveries. That it often resulted in in delays or cold food. Delivery standards that if they were handling it themselves, they would not. Would not provide that. They're really trying to encourage. Patrons to contact them directly. And I think the issue is coming more from the going through the third-party apps.
All right, I have a couple of questions in here from the council members. Mayor Protem?
I'd be supportive of getting more information on this. I actually have had local restaurant owners bring this issue up to me. And so it. Feeling almost like userless fees, a lot of restrictions on what can be. What can be done. So for instance, they take, like you said, up to 35% of the the actual charges. But they don't allow a menu that would have like higher prices so that it's that they're still hitting their margins. So there's a lot of kind of restrictions and. During the time of COVID, when they have very few options for serving residents. You know, and they maybe don't have operationally the ability to have enough drivers to hit everywhere, right? Bringing all of those people on staff. It it does become almost. Difficult for them to figure out, does it make sense to operate or not? So I'd at least like to learn more about it. This did get brought up at CML as just an issue of local control. And so I know that group was supportive of 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 this going forward. It doesn't mean that each community has to. Adopt these rules, but they at least wanted to have the option. So it, you know, I think we should learn a little bit more from the the. The Restaurant Association and then also, you know, obviously, we want to talk and understand from Grubhubs or even DoorDash or Uber Eats perspectives. But I I have heard from residents that this is a real issue and making it very difficult for them to operate.
Counselor Demont?
I'm supportive of at least hearing more information. I don't think that I'd be supportive of some sort of action. Be interesting to hear what everybody else is doing. I know my family owns restaurants and I, you know, they, I've heard. They use some of those services and they ended up, especially with this, they have a waitstaff that's not able to do their job. So they're doing delivery. I mean, that's what a lot of these restaurants are doing. But for me, it comes down to a free market thing. The businesses don't have to work with the Grubhubs or the, you know, these sources, just like the residents don't have to use them. I mean, so there's some some choice in that. It's not like they're being forced into these. Situations, but I still, I think Mayor Protem has a good point of it doesn't hurt us to get more information on it.
Counselor Seymour, I thought I saw your hand up. Did I?
I was just concurring that more information would be good.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from council on this one? Believe the idea is get more data before we try to make a decision. And see what's coming back with the number of communities that you've identified, that Ms. Grafton identified is only four that have done anything on this. So. Begs the question is if this is that big of a problem, why aren't more cities doing it since it was under that bill? A local control issue was put back to the local communities to make a decision. So Ms. Grafton, if you guys can put something together and bring it back to us that has more information and. Try to make it.
Absolutely.
As much detail. Okay. Other questions on the update on COVID? Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have more of a comment. I I just want to say. A gigantic heartfelt thank you to our staff. You know, we started doing this back in March. Here we are almost at the end of the year. There's light at the end of the tunnel with a vaccine, but there's still a lot more work to do. And our staff have worked overtime, evenings, weekends. I know because I've been on those phone calls. With our staff. Involved in those and then doing follow-up. And and I'll tell you what, we've done a lot of work where we. We've helped small businesses, we've helped restaurants, we've worked quickly to have outdoor space so they can take care of that. Our staff have worked their tails off. To help nonprofits, housing. Assistance with housing and food assistance. And then closing the gap in our city budget. I mean, all of this happened this year. I, we're almost to the end of the year. And so if I didn't get a chance, I want to say tonight in this COVID report. We've had weekly reports. I greatly appreciate it. It kept me informed. A tremendous thank you, a gigantic thank you for me to and and hopefully our residents and. And fellow counselors. Thank you for all of your hard work. It's above and beyond, you know, the the scope and. I truly appreciate the hard work that has gone into keeping us informed. And it's really proven that we're a caring city and we're an innovative city. We've. Been a city that innovated and take, we took money and found ways to help our residents and help our small businesses. And. I really just want to say thank you very much before, you know, at the end of the year. And I maybe wouldn't think of it. I want to thank you tonight for this report, the weekly reports and. Everything that's gone into this. So thank you very much to our city staff, our city hall team. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
I wanted to say thank you to Counselor Vols for for reminding us of that. And I want to share in his appreciation. And then I also want to share. And my appreciation for my colleagues who did make sure that we did really make sure we were looking at rental assistance and all of these ways that we help. People, businesses, people, there's a lot of pain out there. I think Counselor Demont said it earlier. There's more more pain than there is opportunity to solve it at this point. But I think we've done a pretty good job. So thank you for for all this work under really difficult challenges. So thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue is now 9:55. That is completed the business of the city council for the tonight. We wish everyone a good evening and we are adjourned.